I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
I'm going to do a roll call. Tony?
And remember, you may have to unmute yourself.
Yes, I'm here.
Thanks.
Art?
Art, can you unmute yourself, please?
Hello, I'm here.
Okay. Larry?
Here.
Christine?
Here.
Phyllis? Okay, I don't hear Phyllis. Tonight's meeting has been convened in accordance with the governor's March 13th, 2020 Executive Order 202.1, which has spent certain provisions of the open meetings law to allow a municipal board to convene a meeting via teleconferencing. In accordance with the executive order, the public has been provided with the ability to view and participate in tonight's meeting by computer, smartphone, or telephone, and to view the meeting on the usual cable television networks. The recording of the meeting will be posted on the town website, and a written transcript of the meeting will be prepared and provided at a later date. There has been a roll call of the board members, and there is a quorum present at this meeting. I have also confirmed that the secretary at this meeting has been duly noticed. We have fulfilled our legal notice requirements by posting a copy of the notice of the meeting on the town's website and on the doors of the town hall as the town's bulletin board is within the building and not presently available to the public. We have emailed a copy of the notice to the media, and we have confirmed that the legal notices for the public hearings have been properly published. So, going to tonight's agenda, I make a motion that items one and two be adjourned at the request of the applicant until the July 13th, 2020 meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? That carries. Item number three has previously been adjourned, and so that brings us to item number four, Brian Smith, 30 Macintosh Drive. Mr. Smith, are you here?
No, Al Capelli is here representing Brian Smith.
Very good.
I'm the Architect, Project Architect.
All right.
Mr. Capelli, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
All right. What do you want to do?
Okay, so we're looking to put an addition on a single-family dwelling. Many of yous have probably stopped by the house. It's a single-story, flat-roofed, contemporary ranch that has one bedroom on the main level and a couple of, I'll call them basement bedrooms, walking out of the basement to the rear. So what we're looking to do is add a couple of bedrooms, if you will, on the main level. As you look at the front of the building, at the front of the house, we're looking to go build to the right side of the house, probably the only location that one could add on to the residential property there. We previously submitted an application, which wasn't heard by the board because it was sent back with the suggestion that, as you see our package that we sent to you, that the lower half of the left side of the house is in fact the front property line, whereas originally when we made our application, we thought that the front of the house was actually the front of the property line, using the, not assumption, but using the theory that if Macintosh Drive was a true cul-de-sac, then the side facing the cul-de-sac, if you will, would be considered the front, so to speak. And the only reason why I'm mentioning this is if one was to consider the right side of the house visually, which is now be considered the rear of the house, if it was the side yard, the variance wouldn't then as great, basically, is what the take on it is, on 12 feet to the property line to the rear, which is a little bit more substantial than if it was considered the side property line. It's been determined nonetheless that the side the addition is going on is the rear, and pretty much that's it. So I don't know if anyone has any questions.
All right. Christine, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Tony? Tony, you're muted. And apparently frozen. So Art, you have any questions?
I'm good, Paul, thank you. All set.
All right, so I have just a few questions, in case Tony unfreezes. Could you describe what we call the rear property, across that boundary, what would you be looking at from that side towards that lot line?
We'd be looking at pretty much what's there now, a one-story structure that kind of falls away from the front of the house, which is one story, towards the backyard. I don't have a side elevation, unfortunately, there. But we're maintaining the architectural character, so we're not adding any gable roofs. It's going to continue the flat roof there, and it'll be the same siding, the same vertical boarding back siding. So the rear of the property, there will be one or two minor windows there. But if you into the site, which I think most of yous have been there, you see the view shed out at the back of the house. That's the two-story end, and that's where all the windows are going to be in the view shed overlooking the valley. I think we attached to our little package that we sent to you, in addition to the site plan, some preliminary architectural floor plan, so you get a sense of the method to the madness of why we're extending the house out to that side.
Is it fair to say that the property is pretty well surrounded and shielded by mature vegetation?
Oh, I think so, yeah. It's undoubtedly. And the owner, Mr. Smith, has spoken to his neighbors, and I don't want to say they don't have any objection, but yeah, I don't think it would be uncharacteristic of the neighborhood there. So I don't think it would be that impactful on that one property, basically, that we'd be encroaching on their setback.
Okay, and Tony, did you have any questions? You are still muted?
No, yeah, okay. No, I don't. I visited the property. I don't have any questions.
Okay, so I have a question for Lisa. The agenda that I have says that he wants to be 12 feet from the rear lot, requiring an eight-foot variance, but it says there's a 30-foot rear lot.
So it's actually, that was an error that was in the denial letter that got carried over to the legal notice, and it's actually 18 feet is required, and that's the variance that's needed. But because we noticed the 30 feet and the 12 feet, I think we're okay for notice purposes. And I would also let you know Phyllis has joined the meeting.
Thank you.
Okay. So if we granted this, we'd be granting an 18-foot variance?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Phyllis, were you able to hear any discussion?
Unfortunately, no, but I did visit the property, and it just, it made sense where they had to put the addition.
Okay. Do you have any questions of the applicant?
I do not, no.
Okay. So I'm going to open it up to the audience. If there's anyone that has any questions regarding this application, I think there's a method to, put your hand up.
Yeah, you can raise your hand. If you're on the phone, you can do star six to mute or unmute, and star nine to raise your hand. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this application?
Did we actually officially open the public hearing with the motion?
Oh.
That's a good question.
Well, I invited him up, and he was sworn in, so I called it.
Right, it's, well, it's, so the applicant being sworn in, the board can take testimony from the applicant and do that prior to or after the public hearing, but at some point there should be a motion to open the public hearing with a second and a vote, and at the same time, a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to open the public hearing on item number four. All those, is there a second?
I'm picking it.
All those in favor, signify by aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Hearing none, that passes. I did not see that anyone from the audience wished to comment on this application, so therefore I would move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by aye.
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 Are there any in opposition? Hearing none, that motion passes. Okay, so we're going to move to item five.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to open the, I make a motion to open the public hearing on item number five. Anthony and Dinah Cuccello, 36 Carmen Drive. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, and that passes.
Okay.
Who is here for Mr. Cuccello?
Mr. and Mrs. Cuccello, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
I do.
Okay.
That's the second time I do.
Do you want to describe your application?
Sure. We are proposing to have installed a 12 by 21 foot in-ground pool, six and a half feet from the side yard lot line.
On your diagram, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, it's the best location based on the septic, and that's about it.
So if I could address two legal issues before we get started, there was one letter from one of the neighbors in opposition to this, well, arguably in opposition to this, and they had two requests in their letter. One was a statement that they felt that there was bias on the part of one of the board members, specifically Phyllis, and they asked that Phyllis not be allowed to participate in the presentation. So the standard for having someone be required to recuse themselves is if they have a monetary interest or an other conflict of interest, and so I will ask Phyllis for the record. Phyllis, do you have any monetary or other interest in this property, or any affiliation with the Cuccellos that would prevent you from making a fair and honest assessment of this application?
None that I'm aware of, but if it makes life easier moving forward, it's easy not to participate.
That's totally your call. So you have the, if you feel that you would like to recuse for this application based on the comment from the neighbors, you may, and if you would like to participate in this application, if you don't have any conflicts and can render it a fair decision, you can.
I don't like the way you worded that, because if I recuse myself, wait, if I, it implies that I'm not able to be fair and impartial. So I will recuse myself because I think it simplifies the process.
Okay, that's a fair statement, and thank you. So let's record reflect that for this application, Phyllis Capone has recused herself. And the second portion, the neighbors had asked that there be a consideration placed if the variance were granted on, that if there were any damage to their property resulting from the grant of variance on this property, that there would be some provision in writing that it would be fully compensable, that there would be full liability. The zoning board is without power to grant anything to impose conditions that had to do with another property, and so that would be without, outside the scope of what the zoning board could do for this parcel, and for any parcel for that matter. And also, if there were any damage to occur to the neighboring property based on anything that happened on this property, there would be a regular civil liability between the neighbors, as there would be with any property regardless of the variance being granted. So I just wanted the board to have that information before they proceeded. And then I note that there were other, Paul, I don't know if you have the list in front of you, we should state for the record what, who we received comments from concerning the property.
I do have two emails. I see at least one person, I think, has signed in that wrote an email, so.
Okay. As long as we have on the record who we've received comments from, that would be great. Now I'm done. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Cuccello, were you done with your presentation?
Yeah, I think our application explains why we're requesting the variance, the necessity to grant the variance, and that's it. I mean, I did talk to the Vogels today, that being Bill, and he told me, unless I misunderstood him, that he didn't have an issue with the pool. I think the letter came from his daughter, who has an interest in the property. As far as her letter mentioning damages to property, that sort of thing, Bill, when I asked him, his pool is 24 years old. He's had one line of replacement. An aerial that I would be happy to submit to the town in addition to our application shows Carmen Drive, a small section of Tinry, and there are 14 pools, one that doesn't show up that's new, and I'm sure there's other ones that are in the area that you just don't see. So we do have pools in the area. I guess as far as any other issues that are in a letter from Nancy Markajon, she brings up things that are not relevant, but a pool is a different use with a different footprint and a different size, completely different method to enter and exit. As far as equipment being used to construct a pool, it would not be necessary to go on their property. We have our own property, which is slightly less than 10 feet on the east side, and it's about nine and a half feet. As far as talking to pool companies and excavators, people that actually use the equipment that would be in charge of constructing the pool, there are excavators that are five feet wide, six feet wide, seven feet wide, so there would be no need for any concern to access our own property. In addition to that, we had a septic repair done about 2010. I'm not sure of the exact date, but there was an excavator that brought in a 1,200 gallon HDPE tank and installed it in the backyard, as well as leach fields. And that was done with construction equipment. That's the only way it could have been done. And so, part of the concern with locating the pool where we're proposing is that should an issue arise where a septic needs to be repaired, the area adjacent to the proposed pool allows us to get to that area. Any other location would segment the property and prevent us from being able to access septic area that would have to be behind the family room. And so that's really the big piece of the puzzle here for the variance.
Okay. Christine, do you have any questions?
Yes. The location of the proposed pool, being that it's close to the lot line, is that, how far away is that from that neighbor's leach fields, I'm wondering?
Well, again, talking to Bill, and in the past, I recall a conversation, but I did talk with him today, and our house, my house, and the neighbor's house, Lil, 38, ours is 36, and 34, the, I would venture to say that the septics are located in identical areas. So that being said, if you're looking at the front of the house, our septic exits out the back to a tank, and the leach fields run the length of the backyard. Bill's property, if it's the same, his house is about 21, 23 feet. I don't remember the exact dimension from an aerial. The pool would be six and a half feet. His tank would be probably 30 feet away, because it's got to be within or behind the footprint of the house. So they're probably have their pool on their leach fields, because I don't think that their leach fields enter our property. I think that it would have been built going towards the west, if that makes sense. So looking at their house, the septic tank would be on the right side of the house, and the leach fields would go towards the left.
Okay. Thank you.
Thirty, I would, again, it's in the ground, but, I mean, they could better answer that question, because I know they've had their tank pumped, and it would be uphill from the pool. The neighbor to the other side, I'm thinking, according to our drawing, if you're 47 and a half feet from the property line, you have 10 feet to their garage, roughly another, let's say, 20 feet of the garage, and then some type of breezeway, you're well into 80 feet, and that's just a round number.
Okay. Thank you.
One more thing, then. The backyard, that neighbor is actually uphill from us. So when you guys came out to the site visit, you saw the backyard, it actually slopes up. There's the fence to the rear.
Okay.
Can I speak?
Who is that?
Who is it?
This is not the, first, we're going to go around the board for public comments, and then once the board has asked all their questions and have all their information, then the floor will be opened up for members of the public to comment.
Okay, Art, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do. Go back to when we went through the variance for the garage. We were told then that it was impossible to put the garage anywhere except where it was because of the leach fields. Now, all of a sudden, it's okay to put a pool back close to the leach fields. What's changed?
I don't think anything's changed. It's just the footprint and the location of the pool is different than where the garage would be. It's impossible to get a car, and the size of the pool is 12 or 14 by 21. It parallels the back of the house. There's only like 10 feet. So to swing a car in any other way would be impossible.
I think the discussion back then was why couldn't the garage be pushed back further toward where the pool is now going?
And I showed my neighbor again today, went through it, but the garage, if you're looking at that, and this is not the application, that has been granted by the board.
I know what's been granted.
What?
I know what's been granted. I'm asking you a question of why.
To put, if we're talking about a garage versus a pool, a garage is 24 by 20. This is a 20 by 12. So I don't see the, even the same use. If a pool, you're entering from either side, a garage, you need to fit a vehicle in it, and so to, I mean, did you come out to the site to see it?
I was there when the house was built. I grew up there, so I know that property very well.
But copies changed since then.
Not much.
But, I know, but I've been, I, did you come to this last visit to see the site?
Yes, we did.
I didn't see anyone knock on the door. Did anyone enter the property to look at it?
We did it from the street.
There's a fence around the property.
I know, but there's a fence around the property. So why can't the pool be further than six feet away from the line, then? Why can't you go to the right more?
How much further would you want us to go over?
Another six feet.
And that's why I'm trying to explain to you. The further we go, the more you impact, there's expansion area for the septic, as well as a play area for the kids. So the further we go over, the less you have for the expansion area. And you cannot expand, you can't put septic that close to the property line on the other side of the pool. And where the septic tank, that's why I would like you to come to the, I know you don't understand, you're shaking your head.
I don't understand.
But if we move it 15 feet, how could we ever use that for expansion area? The pool ends up becoming more into the center of the yard.
Exactly.
Right, and then, so now you don't have expansion area.
Expansion for what? Your septic's already there.
I know, but there's codes that you have to have an expansion area for your septic. That's what we're, that's not my rule. That is what they suggest. So when these things come up, that's you have an area to work with. You can't not take that into consideration.
No more questions.
Anthony, how far is the garage from the property line now?
That is probably 45 inches.
So on your drawing, you show that the proposed pool is closer to the property line than the, well, it's marked as the rear existing house, but.
No, that, that, okay, so when you, yeah, I'm sorry, I just saw the drawing, what you're talking about, yes. That rear footprint, it doesn't show the chimney, but it is, that was the existing footprint.
Right. So my question is, how does the pool relate to, is the pool closer or farther away from the property line than the existing garage?
Further away.
Okay, by how much?
Well, we're proposing the pool to be six and a half feet, and the garage is 3 feet, 9 inches. So the math on that, I'm not good at that sort of thing.
Okay.
What do you have, 3 feet?
Yeah, so 3, it's a little bit, you're farther away, about, more than, a little more than 3 feet farther away from the property line than the garage is. So is that about, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. And how tall is the fence that goes along the property line?
It varies. There's the six foot along 34, and then the back, there is a chain-linked fence. That is behind the shrubs that you would have seen. And then the other side is the neighbor's fence. It matches that.
Okay, so it's fair to say you wouldn't see the pool from the street? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. That's all I have. Tony?
You actually, unless you, I can't even see into my neighbor's, I'm short, but you have to be over six foot tall to see over the fence anyway. So if you're in the pool, there's no one tall enough to even be seen.
Yeah, first of all, I don't know why the fence height is coming into question here. Just to go back to what Art had said earlier, one of the reasons that we, one of the reasons why that garage was considered where it was, was because it couldn't be pushed straight back, and I think that's what Art was referring to. And we couldn't do that because of the infringement on the leach field's septic area. And we couldn't do that because of the infringement on the leach field's septic area. Now, we're talking about putting an in-ground pool, not something that would lay on a slab on top of the ground, in the same area that the footprint of the garage would have been if you had considered our recommendations the first time. That being said, now you want to put a pool there, and I'm looking at your diagram, which pretty much like the first time you came around, is not real specific. I look at six feet, six inches from the side property line, and I look at the distance from the right side of the proposed pool to the septic tank, and it almost looks like another 24 feet. And I don't understand why you can't just move that pool eight feet, four inches to the right, towards the septic, and not even require a variance.
And that...
If, if your drawings aren't conclusive, then maybe you should give us drawings that are. But from what you're giving us, and looking at the different breakdowns, and what you're saying is six feet, six inches, there's more than enough room to move that pool eight feet, four inches to the right, towards the septic, without infringing on the septic, and it won't come any closer to the leach fields the way you have this drawn out, and this would not even be before the board at this time.
That is true, and we're...
Then why aren't you doing it?
Because that's the whole thing, when you move the pool that way, in that direction, if you need to access anything back there with a machine, regardless of its size, for the septic, you would, you would have to be even further over. So when you move it that way, now your septic field, we have the leach field shown there, we don't show an expansion area, but if you ever require additional area for a septic, that's where that moves. That's, it's just like a drainage, it would be just like...
We couldn't, we couldn't, we couldn't allow the garage to be moved straight back because of infringement on the area that you want to infringe upon now with a dug-in in-ground pool.
I...
I don't, I don't understand this application, it just doesn't make sense to me.
I understand what you're saying, and I'm just going to reiterate this one last time. A footprint for a garage, and the requirement to pull a vehicle in and out would be such that if a garage were located in the backyard, you would need to turn around the vehicle onto the leach fields.
That's not what he's saying.
Nope, nope.
No, I, I'm...
Excuse, yeah, thank you, Larry. We weren't talking about that the last, we're talking about taking your existing garage and moving it straight back. That's the way I understood it the last time we were here, I think, Art, you understood it the same way.
Exactly, exactly.
And we were told that that could not be done because it would infringe. We weren't talking about catty corner in the garage so a car can go in it. The car was going to pull straight in and straight out the way it does right now.
And it still would have been built where the leach fields are.
Exactly, why could a pool go there?
I gotta, I gotta stop everybody, just a second. I gotta, Ms. Cuccello? I gotta stop you. Mr. Cuccello? Could you stop? Could you just mute her a second? Not to, not to be rude, but really, only one person can speak at a time, even though there's not a stenographer here, it's really...
The board members, right.
It's really, please stop, please stop. Please stop. It's really important for the record to be clear that only one person speaks at a time. And Mrs. Cuccello, if you want to speak, that's fine, but you haven't been sworn in yet, and I, I think that your husband's doing a fine job. If there's something that you want to say later that you think he's left out, you're certainly welcome to do that. But, and I also caution the members of the board, just one at a time, so we can try and keep things clear, and so everyone's answers, questions can get answered. So Tony, you were up.
May I ask one more question, since it's my turn?
It is your turn, yes.
Have I made myself clear to other members of the board?
I understand your position, I think Art understands your position.
I have nothing else to say, thank you.
Okay. I'm going to hold on to you for a second, Mr. Cuccello. Larry, do you have any questions?
No, not right now.
Okay, and Phyllis, you recused yourself. I do have two emails, one from Paul and Deborah Lil.
Excuse, can I just, may, may I just add one thing before?
Sure.
We lose that. With regards to septic, there are still setbacks that you need to adhere to as well for installing a septic system. And that sort of thing is not shown on the drawing, but when you bury something in the ground, it's there, and you have to, we can't put a pool in the front yard, but it would be a great spot because it's a great yard. Our septic would be even better if it were in that location, because we would have our full backyard, we would be able to do exactly what you're saying to do. To go back, and I know, you're, I get your idea, I understand what you're saying about the garage. But if a garage were to go, if it was to the backyard, or in front, or wherever, you're always going to have, if it were in the backyard, you need a rear yard variance. We're trying to keep this as close as we can to the house, and as far away from the property line as we can, and still allow, if need be, for future residents to be able to construct a septic if they need to. That is the position for the application. The leach fields that we're showing you are what are installed, but the county has, and this is something I'm very familiar with, I've worked in civil engineering for many years, and you have, and you could ask Dutchess County Health Department, you have to have expansion area. It's a fact, and putting the pool in the middle where you want to go, I've looked at that, and the problem with doing that is the small box that comes from the septic tank to the distribution fields, you would have to run to the other side of the pool, and that's just not practical. If the pool is in the middle of the yard, you're just creating a situation later on down the road. That is why we're looking for the variances. When you start to eat up that area, you have to be conscious of the property line with the septic fields, too. So containing the pool in our yard, six and a half feet, allows for an area to be worked on, and if you need to move equipment in or out to address any septic issue, because that's the big one here. That is what the application is about. The septic fields go to the backyard. I'm sorry, that was all I needed to say on that, but I just wanted to address it.
So there are two emails I have from Paul and Deborah Lil, and from Nancy Marco-John. Do you have copies of each of those, Mr. Cuccello?
I only have one, two emails, one from Nancy Marco-John dated Friday, June 5. The email from Lil is Friday, June 5, 10:10 a.m.
Okay, so we have those, I'm not going to read those because Mrs. Lil is, I think there's someone, Paul Lil is here, if you want to comment, but I'm going to enter, these will become part of the record. So I'm going to open it up to anyone who wants to comment on this application.
If you're on the phone, you can use star six to unmute, and star nine to raise your hand. All right, 925, we have a caller who'd like to speak, yep? Go ahead.
Hi, this is Nancy Marco-John.
Hi, Ms. Marco-John, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, what would you like to say?
Well, first of all, Mr. Cuccello is incorrect by saying that the septic on our side of the yard is 20 or 30 feet away, because my father and I walked the side of the yard before the meeting started today, and it is approximately five or six feet from the fence that they have on the property line, which means the leach fields then continue to go back from there. That's number one. Number two, if you actually look in his backyard, which is, and I know it has nothing to do with the variance and everything, but this is just part of what Mr. and Mrs. Cuccello had wanted from the start. In their backyard, after the garage was put up, they have a slab with a whirlpool hot tub back there, they have a large trampoline back there, so that is why they can't put the pool over to where it should be put, and not have to come over and have to get a variance for this. We don't care if they get a pool or not, that's not the issue. The issue is the fact that, once again, they are asking for something above and beyond what the code allows. And it's not in, you know, they got the garage, whatever, it happened, all the suggestions of why it shouldn't have been where, where it could have been before, and Mr. Cuccello constantly saying he couldn't because of the septic. He told my father today that that was a misinterpretation, that's not what he said, but if you look back in the meetings, or as two of the board members did say, that yes, that is what he said. He said that it could not be moved back because of the septic. And, you know, I just think it's unfair that this has happened again, and he made other comments to my father today and to my mother, which is very upsetting. They are very loving people, and what he said to my father today about my mother, and I'm trying to stay non-emotional, because this is more about the law and about the variance, code variances, but he is telling untruths, because the, the septic on our property, and yes, my brother and I own this property, and my parents have a life estate here, and they have been here for many, many, many years. I'm, I'm 55, 12 years old, so we've never had any kind of issues at all, and it's just been in the last three years that we've now had not one issue, but two issues. And his children have used my parents' pool, my parents have opened it up to them, they've used the pool, we, and I, I just want to say again, I just want to stress, it's got nothing to do with them putting a pool in. It's got to do with the fact that they constantly want something more than what they should be entitled to. And that's all I have to say.
Mr. Cuccello, do you have any response to, to that?
Yes, but as far as the application portion is concerned, back to Lil, Lil's letter, just to clarify some things, I, I looked at these letters, and I take great concern with their comments. I am sympathetic to what they're saying, but when the letters come in the way they do, I just don't want the board to see that there's misinformation, and I'll address Lil's letter with that. It says that they are concerned with how we will access the rear yard during construction without entering our property. I think I've already satisfied their concerns, we had a septic system put in, there were no complaints then, it was done with construction equipment. They also say that, and again, I, I wish that it is not a big concern for an application as a pool, but there is really three feet, nine inches on the west side of Carmen Drive, which is 36. They say two feet. Really, a lot of these letters are just littered with misinformation. They say limited accessibility on the east side. I'm 36, they're 38, there's actually nine and a half feet, nine feet, eight inches to the property line. And so, with that said, there's not a reason why this can't be constructed in a responsible manner, basically as the garage has been done. And just since everyone is out there is so concerned about the garage, I have heard many people, as they walk through, explain to me how nice it looks. They say that it looks like it grew there, they think it's fantastic. I've had a person come up to me in their car and say, you know, "My wife loves your house," and I said, "Thank you very much, it's a great compliment." And she said, I said, "It's for sale if you want it," and he said, "No, they want to kick you out," and so, and move in. And these are the types of things that all these people that walk by this house give me compliments. When we're outside doing our yard and taking care of our, our property, it's noted. And, you know, I'm glad that my neighbors get those same compliments, that they take care of their yards. But the concern with us installing a pool or a garage, I just don't understand the bitterness and, you know, to address our kids using their pool. We don't ever, we didn't let our son probably swim in that pool once. My daughter would go over there because they would have a granddaughter over there, and she wanted someone to play with. So the disingenuousness to say that we are, you know, using your pool, that would have been many years ago while their son and daughter-in-law were living in their basement. So it was a convenient thing, and it was a nice thing for my daughter to have someone to play with, but, you know, let's, let's keep to the subject, I guess, and all the concerns we can address about the pool. It's not the garage, it's a pool. So, you know, with questions about how far it is from the septic tank, I, I don't believe that's true from the, from the property line, if you measured perpendicular to the tank. I mean, it's got to be behind the house, and the house is 20 feet away just from the fence. And so now, our, the pool would be located downhill from their house, and they have a pool, which could affect, I guess, my septic area. So I, I don't see the relevance of, of, you know, the, the pool being the problem. It's the variance, I understand that, but again, when we're looking at our septic system, that has to be the priority, and that was a priority with the garage. And you can't just dismiss setbacks for the septic area as well. So you can't get a variance for a septic area, they don't give them. The town does have a means to get variances, and that's what we've applied for. That's what this is about. We've shown why we require a variance, and we've demonstrated it. If people from the board were unable to get to the house and see, but went into other houses, I would be curious as to why that would have been the case. To say you're familiar with the area, that was, you know, because you grew up there, you know, I don't, I don't know why you wouldn't want to give this application the consideration that all the other applications may or may not have received at this point. But from the backyard, like the chairman has said, you can't see the pool, and, you know, that's about it. I'm sure something else will come up, and I'll want to talk about that, too. I hope I've addressed everybody's concerns, their issues. Like I said, a garage and a pool do not function the same way, they don't even have the same footprint, we're not driving a car into the pool, it, it's not the same thing. You know, as far as like legal stuff in, in a letter that we would have to provide, and it's been addressed by the attorney, obviously, but I, the Vogels have never once said, "Hey, you know, if our pool goes, it's going to end up in your septic area." It hasn't happened, and they've had a pool for 24 years. My neighbor Lil, who wrote a letter, I'm sure when the board came out this recent week, saw that they've constructed a berm on my property, and I guess I've been too nice, that's what you call that, because they still refuse to address it. But the discussion today with Lil was that he would like the bricks that I had stacked neatly on his property by six inches, he asked that I move those after I said, "Well, you know, you're kind of on my property."
I think perhaps we're getting a little afar.
When we purchased the house, it looked like that, and everyone out there can see that there's no berm in this area. But there's the berm today, and... But there's the berm today, and so those bricks were moved, but that berm is still there.
I think we're getting a little afar from the issues that we've spoken about.
Well, you know, people throw a lot of stuff at me, so I got to address it all.
Okay. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak about this application?
We have a Mr. Jensen raised their hand.
Okay.
Mr. Jensen, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
What would you like to say?
I'm a neighbor of Tony and Deena's, I live a few doors down at forty-two. Tony, Deena, I just had a question for you. It's a little tricky to tell from your drawing, and you speak a lot of your needed septic variances, and that makes sense. One of the things with these board meetings and requesting variances, there's always a little give and take. And I'm curious if you would thought, if there is a slab in your backyard or other things, if those were moved, would there be a possibility to relocate the pool slightly or to change the design to an above-the-ground pool that would meet your needs without having to request a variance?
I think that's a great question, and to address it, the septic, as I would have liked to have shown all the board members where the slab is for the tub, is closer to the house and the septic tank is further away. So the tub is very close to the back of the house. The septic would never be that close to the house. That being said, a few feet away is the outlet pipe from the house to the septic tank. And so that tank is roughly maybe ten, fifteen feet underground, but it's like a twelve-foot tank by six feet, it's a very large tank, it's a twelve-hundred gallon tank. And so the answer is, no, it can't be relocated anywhere else, the tank is already in the ground, and so that slab was put in a spot that does not affect any of the, you know, underground infrastructure. As far as an above-ground pool or in-ground, you can't drive over, an above-ground pool and you can't drive, you know, on top of an in-ground pool. So the pool, whether it's above or in, is not the problem. With an above-ground pool, it seems like they almost end up being larger because they're twenty or twenty-four foot by twenty, you know, a diameter. So this in comparison is a very small footprint, as far as a pool is concerned. And so the only way that we could have really maximized the septic area would have been if the trees had been cut and then gone right up to the rear property line. But as it stands, those trees are probably to the trunk about thirteen feet away, you have the canopy, throws it another, you know, eight or ten feet, whatever it is, and then from there you have the leach fields. So in short, what's in the ground is staying because it becomes a financial hardship to begin to relocate all this stuff. So I hope I answered that question. If there's a part that I missed, let me know, I'll address it.
If I can follow up, that was very detailed. I wasn't asking about moving the septic, obviously that is an enormous project and not an undertaking anyone would be interested in. I was asking if there was an opportunity to move other structure on your field to provide additional room for the pool or a different shaped pool that may not require their request for a variance.
Any pool without a variance is going to be located towards the center of the yard, and that's where we get into the expansion area. And I know no one likes to hear this, but it's not my, I didn't write the code for New York State septic, it's a done deal, that's what they tell you. So and these codes have changed over the years. And so when these houses were constructed, it was probably a little smaller. And now they require more area, and you have to take into consideration an expansion area. So regardless of where we put a pool, there's setbacks around a septic tank. And so the pool would never have fit into an area where that slab was. That's just misinformation. It's nice that it's back there, but it's not relevant because the pool couldn't have been that close to the house anyway, you would walk out and step into it. And so that's not practical.
And then may I ask one more follow-up for my own edification? You keep referring to the leach field expansion areas, do you know what percentage of your total leach field you need to have available for expansion?
Fifty percent.
And is your leach field to scale? That's one of the very difficult things with the drawing.
I would say that they're very close, they're about thirty-three feet long, you know, you have a distribution box that's on the corner. In the back area where you don't see it, there's a small garden there. Bringing anything over the other way, when it's constructed, you don't, you stay in straight lines when you design a septic system. You don't try to, you know, make something crazy that's not going to work. And so basically what we have is coal tech units that are about two feet wide and are thirty-three feet long, there's a set of three of them in there, I think, so it's probably about ninety-nine feet, something like that, you know? And basically they are positioned, you know, just under the hemlock trees, give or take. And so...
One more, because it sounds like you know it, how much percentage of your current leach field do you have to have an expansion space? But that gives us an idea for the people...
Fifty percent.
How much?
Fifty percent.
I think it would be very helpful to see it in a scaled drawing.
Yeah, I mean, I get that, but look at other applications and then we'll really state, if you think I'm not giving you the proper detail on stuff, it is what it is, it's in the ground and fifty percent is, you know, fifty percent of the area. So it's nice to think that we could move the pool closer to the septic tank, but then you have an offset from the septic tank.
And I want to be clear, Tony, I'm not challenging your honesty in any way. I'm asking for my own clarity because I can't truly tell the distances from this drawing.
Right, so now moving, positioning the pool, which would be the best thing to do according to people's feelings out here, but you can't put the septic area segment a little bit over on the other side and a little bit there and be able to get around the pool. You're not going to, I mean, this is the drawing, I guess, let me show you here, everybody. If you're coming out from the house and a septic tank, and there's a concrete pad over here, you can't fit a pool in here, this is the back of the house, with a gravel area, and then this would be almost considered the fifty percent area. To move, position the pool, to position the pool this way, only creates a gap on this side, and then you have your septic tank. So someone would have great difficulty in trying to, you know, redo something if they needed to. And I don't think it's a great idea to, you know, try to mess with an engineering code that says this is what you have to have. So you go ahead and do this, and then you have a problem, how do you fix that?
I appreciate your answers and I have no further questions.
Is there anyone else that wishes to comment on this application? Is that Ms. Marco John again?
Yes, I just...
Go ahead.
I hear you, Deena, that's fine. I just want to make one other comment. Mr. Cuccello just said it would be a financial hardship to have to do to move things, that's his issue, this is something he wants. So the financial hardship would, yeah, he would have to take that. That is, I just still don't get why he has to come and ask for something that is against the code, again. And, you know, and with his comment about the financial hardship, and there's no bitterness, there is no, like I said, he can have a pool all he wants, why does he have to go against the code variance again?
Chairman, if there's actually legitimate comments or concerns, I will address them at this point. I mean, you know, I can talk about this application all night, but there are things that, you know, I've addressed what was in her letter, I've addressed what's in Lil's letter, we have provided the board, you know, based on, you know, if there's an undesirable change, no, I've said there's already fifteen pools. I offered to submit that to the town, and I will. Does the council have an objection with that being submitted after the public hearing is closed? Any of the additional materials that I've spoke about would be the picture, would be the aerial photo. I mean, I just, as far as, you know, keeping the pool where it is, I'm not going in and saying, "Well, I'd like it one foot and then settle for six feet." The reality is, this is what we can fit and the size is small, and that's what we're looking to put in. We're not looking for a twenty by twenty or a twenty-four by twenty-four. It would be nice, but that's not going to work. The pool's in the ground, no one can see, I've shown you the aerial, you know, the financial hardship, it might be feasible for other people, it's not for me at this time to be able to do that. We're not cutting down the trees in the back, you know, I don't know anyone that's ever had to do that to construct a pool in Town Gipsy. I'm not going to be the first.
Okay, was there anything else, Ms. Marco John? If not, I'm going to ask if there's anyone else.
That's it, I have nothing further.
Okay. Is there anyone else that wants to make a comment about this?
And just to add to that, I don't think she's going to be able to see me from where her house is across the river.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just add, I don't think she's able to see.
Mr. Lil?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I would like to ask that we have these plans made out to scale.
They are to scale, it's one inch equals ten. They are to scale.
Wait, 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 once again, I don't want this to turn into a fistfight.
Mr. Chairman?
So, one person at a time.
Mr. Chairman, as you noted, the garage is pictured here being much farther away from the fence line.
That's not the garage, that's the back room.
Mr. Cuccello, just wait a second, will you?
Mr. Chairman, I submit that I would like to see these plans done to scale. With the leach field, with the septic tank, with the pool, and with that forty-five inch dimension, whatever it might be, more accurately drawn so we know what we're talking about. We all know exactly what we're talking about, not just what we're being told.
And Art? In addition to that, it seems to be, there seems to be other structures or things in the backyard, like a pad with a, you know, that contains a hot tub and all, that aren't shown here.
Exactly.
I'd like to, you know, instead of just pushing something through, I'd like to see everything done where it stands, not cut off, you know, you could take, you can get aerial photographs, you can get a complete to scale with true measurements and showing every structure. If we got to consider all these structures and things in our consideration as to what should be allowed or shouldn't be allowed, we should see all of these things detailed on the drawings that we have to use to consider them.
Exactly. Same as we do for other people that come to...
Thank you.
Okay, just a second, Mr. Cuccello. Anthony, I want you to hold on for a second.
Sure.
Is there anyone else from the audience that wishes to make a comment on this application? All right, hearing none, here's my suggestion. I get a feeling from the board that they're not particularly satisfied with your application as it is today. So I'm going to suggest to you, and it's completely up to you, that you submit a more detailed drawing. I also would like to get some other input regarding the issues that I think are credible issues you bring up about the leach fields. It's completely up to you, if you want to rest on your application today, there will be a vote. I'm not so sure you would be happy with that vote based upon the feeling that I get...
If it's arbitrary and capricious, then we'll take that next step. So if there's, you know, support behind the facts, then that's fine. But as far as the scale drawing, I'll testify that is a one inch equals ten. The site visit that, can I get a idea of the members that showed up to the site visit?
I was there, I looked at the site. I assume everybody else went to the site. I'm sorry?
Who made it into the rear yard?
I will tell you that I just went from the street, that's correct.
So that's one for the street, who else for the rear yard?
Not that it makes any difference, but I was on the street as well, since there was nobody home.
I was on the street.
Wait.
Once again, Mr. Cuccello...
I was on the street as well, and many of our site visits are done from the street. And especially in this time, the reason we're on this type of meeting is one of the reasons why many of those visits are done from the street. So I think out of respect for our neighbors, that has been done. Also, like many of our visits are done from the street area and we don't gain access because some of our site visits happen during the week, not always on the weekend, not always on the weekend when there's complete accessibility. And this has never been an issue before. Thank you.
So, I mean, my wife has been home with the kids, and I don't think anyone even knocked on the door. I just want to put that on the record. So I would encourage you guys to vote tonight, I'll take it the way it is. The fact that someone didn't come to the backyard to look where there's accessibility, I've given you a one inch equals ten, scaled drawing, probably one of the best you're going to see this year as far as pools are concerned. It's ten feet from the rear of the yard, you're not looking at the garage, that is, and that's probably the deception that you guys are confused about, is that the backyard addition is offset from the property line at ten feet. So the pool is only six foot six inches. So I'm prepared for you guys to vote, and I don't see that there's any problems with our proposal and how it would affect any septic areas, including my own. If I do change the location, it would intrude on the septic. And, you know, there's a drawing that has already been submitted with my previous application that you guys could look at. So, you know, there's a give and take here, and we would ideally want to push it all the way over, but we can't do that. That's why it's where it is. So I've made my case, the board has, you know, the right to do what they want to do and vote, and you have all the facts. You have two letters that say I can't construct a pool on my property with accessibility, and I've shown you that I can. There are excavators that will in fact be able to do the work, and whether, you know, is a squad excavator, that's the way it's got to be done. So just to real quick reiterate my application, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties will be created by granting an area variance, no undesirable will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties. There are pools throughout the neighborhood, there are fifteen pools in the aerial photo that I showed you tonight. I will be submitting that on the record. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance, it is not possible to achieve by any other method. It would require relocation of an existing septic system and leach fields. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, the requested area variance is not substantial. By the virtue of the lot's narrowness, it is impossible to meet aside yard restrictions. Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical environment conditions in the neighborhood or district, there is no adverse effect or impact on the environment, neighborhood, or district. The pool would not be visible from nearby properties or road, it would be hidden from the view by a vinyl privacy fence six foot high. Number five, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, which consideration shall be relevant to decision of the... to decision of the Board of Appeals, but not necessarily preclude the granting of the area variance. It was not self-created. The size of the lot is limited to a subdivision that was created in the 50s. The septic system needs to be taken into consideration as not to affect it. That's it.
All right, so if you want to have the record closed tonight, you're not gonna be entitled to add anything to the record.
I don't know what we could add to it.
I'm sorry, I thought you indicated you wanted to submit some additional information to the record.
Well, the board is asking for a scaled drawing and I provided that.
Okay.
I don't know what, you know, I, if there's other, other individuals in applications that are submitting the, this thorough of an application, then, you know, if you're not gonna come to the backyard and you're gonna vote tonight not to approve it based on all the information I gave you, we didn't have to be out there when you were out there. But there's 10 feet to walk in an area, wearing a mask, and to do it from the front yard where the application is in the backyard and be confused about the size of the garage, it's, you know, not, not good practice.
All right, then I'll make a motion to close. Mr. Lil? Did, did you wanna say something, Mr. Lil?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
No, I didn't. I thought I un, I thought I raised my hand out. But since I'm here, I will say something.
I think I have to swear you, I don't think I swore you in yet. Mr. Lil, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do. Okay, I'd just like to address Tony's remarks towards me when he's talking about the berm new we put up. I was kinda surprised this morning. I know the berm was there. It's been there since April of 2003. That's when we got it put on. But today at around 4:30, he kinda came out a little bit raging at me. When am I gonna move my, or first of all, he's raging that contact board with email, like it wasn't my right to do so. I questioned him as to why he hadn't just come to me first and asked me, the only reason I was concerned about this whole thing was his access to his yard on my side. He's had stakes there for a while, put in the ground since he was building the garage, the mark on the property line. So, I knew approximately what it was. It's approximately 10 feet, like he said. I think he said it was nine and a half feet. I didn't know what kind of excavator he was gonna be using, so I didn't know if that was gonna be enough for him to get in his yard without getting on my property. But anyway, so he starts raging at me and then he's got, this is probably not right time to bring this up, but he's talking about the front of the yard again, where one foot of the piece of pie, as I call it, for our property. My wife had put a berm on. I think a lot of people in the board have seen that. It's been here 17 years now. If he wants that, you know, that one foot of property is their back, I'd gladly give it to him. But I reminded him about the back, where that piece of pie goes back towards, away from my fence in the backyard, towards Tony's property. I own five feet of property in the back on, on the other side of my fence, four to five feet. I just reminded about that. You know, not for nothing, but you do have those bricks there. That's when he started tearing, having almost a, a way, moving the, back out. And, uh, that's, that's all I wanna say. It's not really relevant to your decision, I'm sure. But he is a, he's a changed person since this whole garage started three years ago. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And, and again, I would invite and encourage the board, since they were out there and saw the state, the one foot is probably six feet. But again, I'm not great with the tape measure. I don't know how to draw to scale. I've only been in the industry since 2002 and so, you know.
Mr. Chairman, this is, this is getting out of control, I think.
I'm gonna let him speak. He's, he's concluded his application. You wanted to say one more thing in response to Mr. Lil?
Well, I mean, it's one foot, but it's not. It's six feet. If you go measure, you would see that it is six feet on my property. But again, I, we're all, you could see it for yourself. A licensed surveyor came out here and put the stake in the ground. Because when we were doing the garage, we got a survey done. And, you know, to go back, when I was 22 and bought the house, I was naive and I went to work one day and came home and a berm was built. And I didn't know that it was my property. But when the surveyor came out, you know, I realized that this is my property and, and, you know, that's it's just my property. I don't know. I mean, should I feel bad about it?
Okay. Anything else? And in that case, I'll move to close the public hearing on item number?
Second.
Five. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Do you wanna keep this open or are you ready to vote tonight?
Ready to vote.
Okay.
He wants it voted on tonight.
Okay. All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? And there's one recusal. Okay. Then we'll move on to item number six. This is Ben and Stephanie Galati, Eight Twin Hills Road. An application to pursue installation of above-ground pool located in a front yard.
Mrs. Galati, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
So, why don't you describe what you wanna do?
Oh goodness, at the risk of sounding a little redundant. We're trying, we're posing to put a fence six feet in height, kind of in a U shape on our property, that behind that will then be an above, a 20-foot, a 21-foot round above-ground pool. When we, when we actually started, you know, thinking about putting a pool, we were unaware that on a corner lot, you know, we had always thought that's our backyard. We were unaware that it was considered a front yard. So, once we found that out, you know, my husband and I just discussed and we wanna go back the 30 feet. And, you know, our main reason really for applying for the variance really is because we just are hoping that we don't have to give up so much of that lawn. We'd be giving up, you know, relatively 45 feet of like grass space that our kids use. You know, we have two little kids. So, it was just our hope that we'd be able to kind of keep the pool further, you know, closer to the street and then still have the space behind our house that our kids would be able to use and play the gra, you know, the grassy area. We do have a swing set, as is, you know, marked on the, on the drawings that we submitted. But that's what, what we were hoping for.
Okay. Christine, do you have any questions?
Do you have sewer or septic?
We, we have sewer. We have town sewer. Yeah, so that's, we don't have any issues with, you know, anything like that.
That's all.
Art?
Well, Chairman, correct me if I'm wrong, but the only reason we're here for the variance, well, there are two reasons. The height of the fence and the two feet from the Round Hill Road. Is that correct? Or two and a half feet?
Oh, uh, no, it's much further than two and a half.
That's the variance you're looking for. You're looking for that variance?
Oh, on the fence height.
Two and a half feet on the fence, the height of the fence.
Yes, yes, yes. I thought you meant the distance from Round Hill to, to where the fence starts.
You need a variance for the fence height, the surround pool, then you need a variance of two and a half feet to back it off, to make it legal from Round Hill Road, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, my, my question is, and we were out there, you know, your property was wide open. If you did move that back to two and a half feet, it would infringe on your backyard a little bit, as we noticed, but it would negate your need for that variance for the front yard, which is Round Hill Road, and we only have to worry about the variance for the fence height.
Art, may I make a clarification?
Sure.
The variance is needed because it is technically a pool in the front yard.
Right.
So, anything further, moving forward from the house line is, would be in the front yard. So, it's significantly more than two and a half feet, I think. You know, it would have to be in back of the house line. Hold on a second, if I can.
Right, so the fence could be 30 feet from the rear or front yard line, but the pool has to be behind the house.
Right, so if, I don't know if, is my screen being clear?
Is that 21 feet from the fence to the, to the road or to the line?
Yes, twen, yeah, 21.5 feet from the fence to, to the street.
To the street or to your property line?
To the street. So, it's about, uh, it's about seven and a half feet from the property line. Because I called the, um, the highway department and they said that to figure out where your property line starts, you know, it's 30 feet from the center of the road. So, we measured it out. So, so the fence is about seven and a half feet from the property line. On the one side and, cause we're not square, um, on that, you know, on the eastern side, it's seven and a half feet and then on the western side, it's closer to 19 because of the way it works out. Not being totally square.
So, in order to eliminate the variance for where the pool is located, it would have to be behind the, what is technically, I guess, the side of the house, but it's the front of the house because it is a corner lot. So, it would have to be pretty much where the patio is, you know, in the area that's labeled patio.
Right, yeah, that's, that's, when we found out, that's what we, you know, were discussing. That, that's our reason for going for the variance. Cause if we put it there, we'd be losing. It would, it just would break it up so much. This pool in the middle and then we would just lose so much other space. You know, that we just hope to keep for our, you know, just so that they can play. And, you know, so that we have that space.
So, I'm gonna stop sharing my screen unless anyone wants it still up there?
That's good.
Okay.
Thanks.
And I will admit, my drawing is not, you know, as you can, I'm sure you can tell, it's very raw, not to scale, cause I did not know how to do that. But I tried my best, put all the measurements that I thought were relevant.
When, when, when we spoke to you when we were out there, your spring set, is that, was that installed by you or is that installed so it's set in concrete? Is, is that something that could be moved fairly easily if you had to?
Um, so we were the ones that put it, but it was professionally installed. I mean, I probably would have to call professionals to move it because I don't, I, just to make sure it was backed up the right way so that, you know, my kids wouldn't get hurt on it.
I'm good for now. Thank you.
Do you know the, the length of the driveway?
Oh, the one measurement I didn't take. I don't, I apologize.
Well, what I really wanna know is how far the house is from the lot line. Do you know that?
Oh. Um, I mean, I just have that, that on the drawing that I was given the survey. I mean, the corner of, the front part of, the front corner of my house is, is 54 feet. I don't know. That longer part?
Fifty-four feet to the street or to the property?
Oh, well, it has it, yeah, that has it to the street.
Okay.
So, I would say, I guess, probably subtract 12 to 15 feet is what I was told to the property line.
Okay. That's all I have. Tony?
No questions.
No questions? Larry?
No questions.
Phyllis?
You're muted, Phyllis.
Phyllis, you're unmuted.
You're muted.
I'm recusing myself on this one and so therefore have no questions.
All right, I'd forgotten that, sorry. Where do you think 30 feet from your property line would put the, would put the fence?
30 feet from the property line, um...
How far away from the house?
It goes, if you're looking at the drawing, I'm not sure if you guys have it in front of you, where it says gravel drive, 30, 30 feet is probably like where the E is in, in gravel. It's, it's relatively far up. We measured it. The marker I used is when I parked my car. Oh, yeah. So, okay, yeah. So, where that E is, like on gravel, that's pretty much where the fence would start when we, um, when we walked it out. And so then, you know, we were just sad that on the, on the backside of it, we would be losing, you know, about 30 feet of just grassy area. And not that, you know, we chose to put this pool and I understand that. And, but one of the reasons, or a couple of the reasons that we chose this location is, one, it's, it's probably one of the most level on our property, which would, you know, lead us to avoid having to have someone come out and really level the land. Also, we have pine trees all around the perimeter and we wanted to try and stay as far away from those, you know, as we could for, so that we wouldn't get the needles in the pool and so that we would have the most sunlight over the pool. And also, this area is really the most conducive for the electric to go because it's, our electrical panel is located in the garage towards the front of the house in that corner. So, it just would be easier to put the trench and go right in through the, through our cinder block, you know, and, and put it up there through that, through that way. Which, as you saw when you came out, the trench was actually there, cause my husband gets a little bit excited about projects.
What would be the problem with putting the pool on the other side of the house?
Yes, I was wondering, Paul.
What's that?
That's what I was looking at too just now, buddy.
The other, like, so kind of next to the swing set back there?
Well, along the, behind the front line of the house, but on the side.
You're talking about along the line that says 47 feet, right, Paul? Somewhere in that area.
Yeah. Um, I mean, it's just, there, there's a lot of, there's more shade there, there's more, you know, the trees hang over, it's closer. The area is not as wide there. Also, it's, as you can see, we have a patio
Right.
on the side. And I just, it's, that area is just so out of the way. I wouldn't, it would be difficult for me to like, be doing anything else and be able to watch my kids in the pool. I mean, to be hon, if I'm being honest.
Okay. But help me again with how far 30 feet would be from your property line if you...
So, again, where, where, if you're looking at the drawing, pretty much where the E is in the word gravel.
Where the G is?
The E, the E.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, when we measured it out, that's pretty much where 30 feet would be.
And how far from the fence did you wanna put the pool?
We are going to leave a three-foot, the, the necessary three-foot radius around the pool.
Okay.
But then it would kind of be in, you know, the clo, it would not go closer than three feet in, you know, on, on the, on the side, on the western side, it would be, you know, there'd be more than the three feet, but the closest that it would be to the fence is three feet.
Okay.
Cause it needs to have that area around it.
So...
So, we actually marked out on our lawn, for anyone who came, there was an orange 24-foot
Right.
circle, just to, to show. And my husband had like white dots all around to show the fence, where it would be also.
So, I have a question for our attorney. My reading of the code says the fence, the three and a half foot restriction for the fence is for the front yard or, or 30 feet from the lot line, whichever is least restrictive. Is, is that your reading of the code?
I will pull it up right now and if you continue discussing it, I'll let you know in a minute. I didn't have the code section pulled up. Carry on and I'll get right back to you.
Is there, is there anyone in the audience that has any comments regarding this application?
Aaron Bishop is, yeah, yeah. Raise their hand. I can unmute you if you'd like.
Okay, can you hear us now?
Yeah.
Yeah. Mr. and Mrs. Biscop, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
I do.
So, what are your comments?
It says Aaron Biscop, but it's William and Lydia Biscop. We live adjacent to their, what we call their backyard, I guess. We live adjacent to their, what we call their backyard, I guess, according to zoning, it's front yard or a side yard. Well, we had no problem whatsoever with them putting, uh, the pool and the fence there. They've always maintained their property in an exceptional manner. They've been here a couple of years, I might be wrong, by a couple of months, but they've done many improvements to the house. They take care of their property immaculately. Um, it is no detriment to the road, it's, I guess, thirty feet from the road. I feel there's no detriment to the neighborhood. I just think it's, uh, it should be improved, I have no problem with it whatsoever. We are the closest adjacent property to their backyard, front yard, whatever you want to call it. Lydia, you might want to say something.
Yes, I, I, we've lived in our home for over thirty-two years, um, we've never had better neighbors. We have, we have, we just wanted to support them, and we have no issue with it, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Is there anyone else?
Again, if you are on a phone, you can use star six to unmute yourself, or star nine to raise your hand. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone else.
So Mr. Chairman, to answer your question, the actual code language says, "In a residential district, walls and fences not exceeding eight feet in height are permitted on any portion of a lot behind the front building line or the front setback line, whichever is less restrictive, except where corner clearances are required for traffic safety, otherwise." And then the second part is really what the variance is needed. It says, "Within required front yards, no hedge, fence, or wall shall exceed three-and-a-half feet." And I, because I think this falls within the second sentence of that paragraph, that it, if it's with, if the fence is located within a front yard, it can't exceed three-and-a-half feet without the variance.
Right, but isn't there some language that, or thirty feet from the, whichever is least restrictive?
No, well, the language that I'm looking at for the first sentence, it says, um, "Behind the front building line or front setback line, whichever is less restrictive." I don't see something for thirty feet, and I just pulled it up on...
Well, I, thirty feet is the, uh, lot line, right?
Setback.
Setback line.
Right.
So if, if the fence were thirty feet back, was within the front yard setback line, she would not, she would not need a variance, would she? If she wanted a six-foot fence?
It still says, "Within required front yards." No fence, so I don't know that the exception gets you around the... There's an adjustment. Right, I, I still think that the variance is needed, because the, the exception for whether you use the front building line or the front setback line, that you're using that for what's less restrictive, to take your measurement for where the building is and where you need your setbacks? I see what you're saying, um, I'd really have to think about it, but right now, as I sit here, I think the sentence, second sentence governs, it says, "Within required front yards." Now, see, now you're putting me on the spot, um...
I will tell you that we've interpreted it that way in the past.
I don't recall anywhere we had a greater than thirty-foot, um, either setback or front yard, so that may have been prior to my time on the board.
I believe it was.
If that's the case, um, I can see that if you take the two sentences in tandem, and that you're using the front setback line or front building line to determine the required front yard. I, I could live with that.
Okay.
So that would be accurate, okay.
Okay. I do have a letter from Marilyn DiRienzo. Did you get a copy of that, Ms. Galati? No?
I did not.
It's a, it's to Sonia James, Sonia, in reference to the letter I received regarding a six-foot fence in the front yard. Of Ben and Stephanie Galati, here's my position on this. I feel that a fence and a pool that close to the road would be a decline in the appearance of the neighborhood. I definitely agree with the zoning regulation as written, the fence and the pool should be backed further, or will not detract from the neighborhood. I do not plan on calling into the meeting, so please make sure my opinion is considered. Please acknowledge receipt of this email, thank you very much, Mike DiRienzo.
Uh, we have a hand raised again from, uh, Biscop, so I'm gonna unmute them.
Is there anyone else that wishes to?
They raised their hand, but I'm not able to unmute.
I, yeah, I think they're talking, but...
I don't think he's unmuted, actually.
Yeah, I couldn't unmute him. Uh, can you try to unmute yourself?
I just wanted to mention, across the road directly, uh, there's another house on the corner of Round Hill and Twin Hills Road, and there is a fence there that's six feet high, that's less than ten feet from the road, which is very attractive, and it's not detrimental to, to the neighborhood. So I, you know, they're looking to put a fence thirty feet from the road. I just can't understand why that cannot be allowed, when that fence is already up.
Yes, and just in response to that, um, that fence is much closer to the road, and, and as Bill said, it is very attractive, um, you know, there is shrubbery in front of it and, and flowering bushes, and we are, it is our intention, absolutely, to, if we, you know, are granted it, even if the fence has to be thirty back, we plan on, you know, nicely landscaping the front of it, because we, you know, we do want it to look nice. We have no intention of, you know, causing the neighborhood to, you know, to look any different than it does. So, um, so we, like I said, fully intend to make it just as attractive as the one that's, uh, directly across from us. It's pretty much a mirror image of a fence that we would like
Okay.
unmuted, you've shaped and...
Were there any, did any board member have any further questions?
Good.
No.
All right, then, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Uh, all those in favor signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? And one recusal? Next is item number seven. Jose Rodriguez, sixty-three Lindberg Place, requesting variance, uh, to permit an above-ground pool, two feet from the property line. Mr. Rodriguez?
I, um, yeah, I guess we have a recurring theme here.
Mr. Rodriguez, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
Okay, what do you want to do?
Uh, a pool. Uh, it's an above-ground pool, a fifteen-foot round. Al- also, I guess, um, the fence, uh, is part of the variance. It's actually an existing fence that was here long before I actually purchased the property. Uh, so I'm just trying to cover that, you know, as well. Uh, the, the, I'm on a corner lot, so I found out that basically I can't do anything, uh, by zoning, uh, without a variance. Um, the pool would be in the backyard, um, in the back corner, and the one place that's most affected is my next-door neighbor, uh, was, it would be pretty much, pretty close to the property line, I believe it's about, oh, sorry. I think it's roughly two feet from the property, uh, property line. A little, a little less than two feet, roughly a foot, ten inches. Um, now, the neighbors, I've spoken to them, especially the neighbor most affected, that it's right on the property line, they, uh, I, I attached with the variance three letters from my neighbors who were in full support of us having the pool, including the neighbor, like I said, that's most affected, that's right on the property line. It, it just seems to be the best location for it, I, I, there's no, you know, um... It, it's on the side, if you, anyone who's come to the yard, it's, it's a rectangular yard, and it's, uh, it would be right behind the deck, so kind of in line. That, away from the road.
One-six-two.
Okay, Christine, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Art?
Well, again, we were out there, we didn't go on your property, we could see it from the road very easily. There really is no other place in that yard to put a pool.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, you're, it's pretty tight.
Yeah, it is.
If you want any yard whatsoever, you have no choice, I don't... I don't see any other place for it, that's, is that correct?
Yeah, that's exactly right.
Pretty tight. Um, no, I'm good, Mr. Chairman, I'm all set.
Okay, Tony?
I have no questions, and just to, since it's been an issue, I did make a site visit, had to visit from the road, and from what I was able to see, everything, um, seems according to plan here, so I have no other questions.
Okay, Larry?
No questions.
Phyllis? And again, you're muted?
No questions.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that has, uh, that wants to comment on this application?
Star six to mute and unmute, star nine to raise your hand if you're on the phone.
Okay, hearing none, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second? Okay.
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Uh, is there anyone in opposition? Then the motion carries. And that brings us to number eight. Loretta Williams, nineteen Alex Way, requesting a variance to permit insulation of an above-ground pool in a front yard, and to permit a shed located in the front yard.
Yes, I am, we are here. I'm, uh, the husband, Finney, his wife.
Okay.
Hi, Mr. Fi- Mr. White, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
So what do you want to do?
I want to put a pool, uh, in front of the house, because most of the property that we have, it's in the back, where it's a drainage, drain and an easement, and to the side, to the left of it, we have the same issue, so we cannot, we not done it that much in the back, of course, we can't cut any trees or do anything, because it's considered wildlife reserve. So the only space that we have is in front of the property.
That's ridiculous, the background as soon as...
So that's why, yeah, that's why we're trying to put a pool in the front, and also the shed, and that's where we apply for the variance.
Okay, and I'm sorry, what about the shed?
The shed, also, we cannot put nothing in the back of the house, because we don't have that much space in the back of the house, so the only place that would be an ideal for the shed to go is in the front corner next to the neighbor, which we have about, I can put about ten feet from the neighbor, and we still have ample amount of space to put the shed. And when it comes to the pool, we can also go fifteen feet from the property line and still have enough space to put the pool, which we apply for the background pool.
Christine, you have any questions?
No questions.
All right.
No questions.
Because you can't see the house from the road, you can't see anything from the road, so...
Right. Um, how much of the pool would be in front of the house?
Uh, we're looking at fifteen-by-thirty pool, about now.
So a fifteen-by-thirty pool, but how much of it, is the whole thing gonna be in the front?
I didn't hear you, come again?
Your drawing shows the pool mostly on the side of the house, but a part of it in the front?
Yes, that's, that's where we first drew it, by when, uh, they came on site to do the survey, realizing there's a septic tank over there, so we came, we went thirty-three feet from the side of the house to the front of the property, from the side, to the front of the house to put the pool. So we have, we cleared the septic tank and the beach field as well.
All right, so on the diagram that you provided, can you give me an indication where the pool would be?
The pool would be from the corner of the house, you go on thirty-three feet forward, and we go on fifteen feet from the next neighbor's property line inward.
Okay, and how far from the shed? Is the shed accurately?
The shed is gonna be, there's a, there's a tree line, yeah, the shed is gonna be accurate. So there's a tree line right there, so we go on ten feet from the tree line and ten feet from the other neighbor's property line.
Okay. Tony?
I have no questions, because of the site, there's no way, I can't even see anything that's gonna be there.
Right. Uh, Larry?
No questions.
And Phyllis?
No, I have no questions, I spoke with Mr. White on, uh, Saturday.
All right, is there anyone in the audience that has any, um, input on this application? And wishes to speak?
Star six can mute or unmute your phone, and star nine to raise your hand.
Okay, hearing none, then I make a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Any in opposition? Then the motion carries. Next is number nine. Um, this is IMP Real Estate LLC, represented by John Sullivan, regarding, um, is it forty-four LaGrange Avenue?
Evening, this is John Sullivan.
Mr. Sullivan, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
All right, can you describe the project?
If anyone can hear me well? I had issues with my laptop, so it's, sometimes goes in and out, just to confirm you can hear me, that'd be great.
Yeah, we hear you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Can I share my screen?
Uh, yeah, go ahead, John.
Oop, there we go. So this, this application for forty-four LaGrange Avenue has been in front of the planning board in February and also back in April. Uh, we're before you this evening for four variances. Variance one is for a, um, relief from the side yard setback, I'm sorry, rear yard setback, which requires twenty feet, and we're proposing fourteen-foot variance. The proposed building will be six feet off the property line, which is along the western edge, right here. Um, in addition to that, there's another variance for the, uh, let me back up one second. The proposal for this project is a mixed-use development. The ground floor will be a restaurant, about twenty-six hundred square feet, three proposed, uh, dwelling units on the second floor, each are one-bedroom apartments. Um, the second is for the refusing closure, which is located on the, uh, southwest corner of the building. Um, it's at this location here, we need relief from the fifty-foot requirement to a residential zone. So that's the second variance. Uh, we're also, the lot area requires sixty percent, the proposed building and improvements are at seventy percent, so we would need it to be... And then the last is for, you know, satisfying open space requirements for the residential component. So... So, this is the existing site plan, there's a existing single-family dwelling that will be removed, this is the post-site plan, um, I'll just note here too, that along the southeastern, uh, proposed building and Billy, uh... So, that's the proposal, as I mentioned, we're in front of the planning board, and in order to speed with them, we would need the four variances requested.
I'm sorry, could you just explain to me the variance you need for the residential dwelling units?
They require, the residential component requires an open space, uh, for, I suppose, recreation, and, you know, the way the property is situated and, and the size of the proposal, there's just no room for any open space.
So you, you need a complete variance on that, on that requirement?
Yes.
Okay.
And there isn't actually a numeric requirement, um, it's just, um, the, the code in the ATC district reads that, uh, where you're gonna have dwelling units above, uh, non-residential, that you have to meet applicable coverage and open space requirements, and provide sufficient parking for the residential uses, so, but there isn't a numeric, uh, amount of open space to, uh...
Okay. All right, Christine, you have any questions?
No questions.
Art?
No questions.
I don't have any questions. Tony?
I have no questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Phyllis?
I don't have any questions.
Okay. We have received a number of emails regarding this application, I will tell you that they're all in support of the application, and they'll be submitted and made part of the record. Is there anyone in the community, uh, audience which wishes to come, who wishes to comment on this application?
Actually, John, if you could un-share your screen for me, that would be good, and then I can see who is trying to speak. Thank you, and again, if you're on a phone, you can, you, oh, I see somebody raising their hand, so, yeah, go ahead.
Hi, um, so my name's Philomena Finelli, and I'm a business...
Ms. Finelli, excuse me, do you, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do. So, yeah, my, for the record, my name's Philomena Finelli, I own a business by the name of Impact PR and Communications, and our business is located on Lagrange Avenue, uh, so that's an area I frequent often, and I just wanted to add my voice of support for this project and the variances needed to make it happen. Uh, I've had my business in that area and on that street for nearly five years now, and I've seen that property be vacant and in some need of improvements and vitality again, and it's a very walkable neighborhood, uh, what's being proposed here really blends nicely with the mix of kind of commercial, restaurant use, rental residential that you find in this neighborhood, and, um, I'm really in, in full support of that, and especially at a time like this, when our community really needs investment and development and, and that kind of infusion of life and vibrancy, so just wanted to lend my support, and that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Anyone else?
Bob Legacy has raised his hand, Bob, if you want to, uh, go ahead. You need to unmute yourself, Bob, if you can, or I can try to do it for you, if you'd like. I'll try to do it for you, let's see. No. Bob, are you on a phone, you would do star six, if you're on the computer, it's usually near the bottom of the screen, uh, mute and unmute? I'm unable to unmute you, Bob. Yeah, I can't, I can't seem to do it for him, so he's gonna have to, there we go. You're good, Bob. No?
Okay, is there anyone else that wants to comment on this application?
I'm not seeing anybody else.
All right, then I'll make a, a motion to, um, close the public hearing.
Second, Matt.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, any in opposed? Then that's carried, and, um, that brings us, I think, to the end, uh, of the public hearing part of this, I'm gonna suggest a 15-minute recess, and then we can reconvene at 8:15. Do we need, I need, do I need to make a motion to do that? Okay, and so I, I moved that we recess until 8:15. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Then, uh, we'll see you back at 8:15.